It also kinda shows why Edgeview condominiums didn't really expand any farther than they did because they would've been building in this area that's susceptible to spring flooding. Planning Commission Action. Based on finding of compliance or non-compliance with the previously approved site plan, the commission shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the applicant's application. Staff comments. Staff does recommend that if this commission approves the request from Highland Hills Holdings, the reduced setback would be allowed only for buildings 11 and 12, not the entire site property, et cetera. So, we're not suggesting that the entire... Bear with me here. Not suggesting that the entire west property line be reset as far as the setback, but just that one particular site that'll have 11 and 12. And Dave can explain the reasons why. It's...I understand it, but we'll let him explain it. So, with that, I'm done. If you have any questions for me, or any questions for Mr. Gregg, please let me know. And I'm gonna turn this over to you folks.
What clearance do you have to have for...from the water line?
There's a 20-foot easement through there. So, since the original approval, we purchased a 60-foot strip along the west property line and added that. And there was another...it was originally approved for nine duplexes, so there was another one up in this northwest corner. And I eliminated one duplex because when we got building, it just seemed to be too crowded. So, currently, the water line, if you see this dashed line on your print, that's the water line. And I think the people on the backhoe probably got that water line moved a little bit to the southwest, further than it should've been. And so now, as I stake out this building, if I...as I come ahead, move the building to the east, it also pushes it further to the south, closer to that building in the corner. And currently, there's nothing...you know, there's the one more building that goes to the northeast of that one, but the building that was located in that northwest corner is gone, and we eliminated it. So, it actually provides more distance between the condos by pushing that back into the north a little bit. And if it wasn't for the water line, I could easily just slide it over at the 35-foot line, but as you come further to the east, it gets close...too close to the water line. So, and that's my request.
I'm trying to make sure I'm in the right square.
You are.
I am, okay.
So, I'll move 11 and 12 to the west, correct?
Move 11 and 12 to the west, yes, 10 feet. And then that gives me more clearance between 9 and 10. I can get the distance from the water line, but as I move...like I say, then I need to move the building closer to 9 and 10.
You rotate it down like this or...
Which just...
Why is 11 and 12 not more in between 13 and 14 and 10 and 9?
Because of the water line.
They can't put it on top of the water line.
If you look on...if you look on this...
Oh, I see that water line.
City water line.
I'm with you now. Well, I was looking at that water line.
No, no, no.
Okay.
When they put the water line on...
Sorry, I apologize.
City provided water line.
When they're running a backhoe, they don't always get things precisely where they should be. And there was another building up in that northwest corner originally.
Okay.
Okay. And it's this real heavy underbrush runs the length of that side of that lot.
Everywhere I looked, it was there. I mean...
Yeah, there you go.
This was it. This was it. The sun was just right for the color, so I had to show it to John, you know.
And the little greenhouse that's left that adjoins us, that is actually separate from this parcel that...that is just a 61 lot that that little greenhouse is on. The parcel that directly adjoins me in the back is owned by the house that was removed a few years ago.
Is this the last of the buildings, the off there, the units?
There are two more that aren't built.
Which ones?
Units 13 and 14, and 6 and 7.
There's not gonna be a 15 and 16 all over the west corner?
Um, is...no, those were eliminated.
13 and 14 and what?
They were proposed.
I know, but then he said 6 and 7, and I'm looking at 5 and 6 and 7 and 8.
16 and 17.
16.
We're asking 15 and 16, if that was where...he talked about eliminating two in the northwest corner, and that's why we eliminated it.
Okay.
They weren't too crowded there. Oh, I'm sorry. 15 and 17. No, they're there. Just whatever.
They renumbered our house as 16 when we eliminated those.
But at 15, Dave?
Hmm?
Where's 15 at?
There is no 15.
I don't want the 13 floor.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was hungry, Dave. I was a hungry man. So, is it standard that it's required 35 feet setback from property line?
Well, if this was a...when Jerry did this, he just said there really is no front-by-side yard, you know, on a side yard, I think, in R1, what is it?
Side yard, R1, combined, 25 feet, 10 feet at the least.
So, and I agreed with him at that time because it was not really an issue, but...and I mean, I can put it in at 35, it just pushes it closer to Dr. LeBaron's house.
Okay. So, we're just looking at a 10-foot difference?
Just further one lot.
For the one, correct?
Building 11, 12, that's combined.
Yep.
And we're still not breaking any rules, so...
Nope.
Okay. Just a change to the original deal because of wetlands and the city water line, combination. Okay.
I would think we should do...
No, I always...that way I'm not...
I'd be chucking off somebody else.
Well, no, that way I'm not swaying anything. I just try and guide you all. So, at this stage, haven't heard anything from right-hand side down here.
I see no issues with that.
Okay.
I'm not putting a condition on just this one building.
Just because it's...oh, yeah, that too.
Yeah, let's make a motion, accept that 25 feet with just 11 and 12 buildings.
Staff good with that? Yep?
I'll support it.
And supportive of Ms. Philkins.
Philkins?
Yes.
Chicklow?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Champlin?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, you can get back if you'd like. Motion to allow Dave back up.
Do you want the city logo up now, or would you like my photos?
Hold it, Chris.
Okay, we'll leave it. That's good, because you may...I don't know if you have to change it here yet, because the folks at Cadillac Junction are here, welcome again, folks. Long time no see for a little bit, I don't know. Oh, oh, God, look. Ah, okay, staff ready, we good to keep moving?
Well... It's thrown a little bit of a curveball this evening. I have reviewed the site plan as submitted and was largely in support of it with a couple modest changes. They've come tonight with some revisions to the plan and, you know, so it's without anybody having a great deal of time to look at it, but I guess I'll let them explain the changes. I think the intent of the changes was to expand the amount of parking on the site. But I guess in this case, usually I'd go first, but since what I've written will now be changed, I think it's better that they go first. And this isn't a public hearing, this is just a normal two-step process for the site plan to go to the planning commission. And your role here is to issue a recommendation to the council, and then the council would be the final approval on the site plan change. But with that, I think I'll turn it over to Jim, and he can talk about what changes that they're proposing be made.
Right, and you kinda had four things there. So, I guess before I go and get prepared for the horse, so I'm new business right now, I'm gonna advertise here. Terry, the LLC final site plan approval here for multi-use building in the Cadillac Junction, which is located in the mixed-use planned unit development district. There, I just had to read that to be legal. Okay, now, hi, Jim.
Okay, hi. Jim Vanderlan, Terry D. I'm gonna let our architect tell you most of the changes, but I thought maybe I might bring you up to speed a little bit about the activity that we've got going on at Cadillac Junction right now and bring you up to date where we're at on that. Which just changed as I was on my way to this meeting, I got a phone call from our excavator. And hopefully J&amp;H and Tim Hortons will be open by November 10th, I would guess, in that area. They'll be open, they were originally scheduled for November 21st, but we got the schedule bumped up quite a bit here just recently. And I also wanted to, you know, part of that is the tremendous amount of work that DTE had to do out there. If you've noticed the work at the substation and the work at the relocation of the big gas line. M-55 work is all done, we're just waiting to connect into Terry D Boulevard and the retention pond and the utilities are all in, and I believe we've turned them over to the city now, too. So, that...what we're proposing tonight is to build, I don't know if you've got a site plan, the sketch plan or not. They have an excerpt from the sketch plan that shows the appropriate site. Oh, you got that? Okay. Oh, okay, good deal, wow.
Oh, it's fair enough.
You know, I don't know if it's bigger, but it's got circled the site that we're talking about. And the reason that we're doing that site is it moves the utilities over to the sites on M-55 to the east. And it just is a logical next building to go up for us.
I think for those of us on the board, that this eight-and-a-half sheet with markings of what has completed and what you're asking approval on indicated will help us to be oriented to the overall project.
Excuse me?
You circled what you...
That's the site that we're talking about tonight, the building that we're talking about.
And I appreciate that because it ties it in with what's...
Oh, okay.
And I would suggest, in the next buildings, you do that, do a similar thing so we can tie it together a lot quicker.
Sure.
These are great, but it doesn't tie the project together.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. So, that's the building that we've got planned. I'm gonna turn it over to Omega Architects, Joe, and I don't wanna butcher his last name. I'll let him give it, I apologize, but he's the architect that did J&amp;H Oil, the site that we got out there now, and we're very pleased with that, that building. And so, we've hired him to do a building for us, and I'll just turn it over to Joe and let you go. Thanks, Joe.
Sign in here. My name is Joe Grotowski, I'm with Omega Architects. Grotowski.
Actually, pronounced just how it is spelled. Thank you, Joe.
I'm gonna get some things out here, and then I'm gonna kinda go into my spiel for you.
Okay.
So, basically, what I gave you right now is a little simpler drawn version of the site plan on that first page, sketch if you wanna call it that, but it's to scale. It's the exact same size as the site plan you have right now. And basically, what happened was, when we first started laying this out, we were trying, I was trying, to keep this as close to the footprint of the original drawing that was produced by Excel Engineering some time back, when the whole site was laid out. The problem was, I couldn't get this 9,400-square-foot building, and actually, if you look at your general map, it was a 10,000-square-foot building. It had only 40 parking spaces dedicated to it. So, we went down to 9,400-square-foot building, and we came up on the original plan with 72 parking spaces. And we submitted that, and that's what you have in your packet, that's what you were given a week and a half, two weeks ago. Okay, but since then, we sat down and we said, "Well, there's minimum parking here, that meets the minimum ordinance." There's one way you can figure out parking for, say, a restaurant space, and that's what Jim and John are trying to find for this building, is like national chain-type restaurants, like Subway, like Jimmy John's, something like that. And you can also go through in the ordinance, and you can calculate out one parking space per every two occupants. And we can make that by putting 35 fifth seats inside each one of these and say they have four or five people max working in them, and that's how you get 40 on each end, and you get 20 cars for each restaurant. That only leaves 32 cars, though, for the rest of the space in the building, which is over half of the building. So, 40 goes to the restaurant. So, we started...I did, anyway, I was the one that brought it up, I started looking at it after we had even submitted it and said, "Here's the problem. We only have so many spaces out in front of this building, which is where most of the parking spaces should be. We had too many parking spaces behind the building," which is awkward because, you know, once you get past your employee number for the building, any other spaces out behind the building are kinda, you know, not very useful, let's put it that way, because people have to walk all the way around to the front of the building to get in. So, what we did was, we had to take a little bit more space to the south, and that drawing that I've got on the top there, I showed there, right in the middle of the driveway, by the wording of Terry D Boulevard, that dashed line that goes across the page, that's where the property line ended on the plans that you were given originally, okay? So, I showed on there, we added about 43 feet to the south. What that did was, that allowed us to bump our total parking up from 72 spaces to 90 on the site. Also, what we did, and another thing you can see, in the path of where it says "New Building" there, there's a 34-foot dimension. That dashed line was where the...and the dashed line in general was the box of the building originally. So, what we did was, got rid of all that parking behind the building, moved the building back 34 feet. We reduced the space in front, the sidewalk-y space in front, where we're planning on putting some tables on each end, outdoor seating for the restaurants, okay? We reduced that down, and we got a whole other row of parking in the front of the building. And I think one of the reasons we came in with it this way is because, keep in mind, number one, the building footprint has not changed from what we originally submitted. It's still 9,472 square feet, that's the outside footprint of this building. The exterior design of the building has not changed, because the building size hasn't changed, so everything that you had in your packet originally did not change. So, the look of the building is gonna be the same, and I...if you...y'all should've had a colored front elevation of the building to show you kind of...it's gonna be all brick all the way around the entire building. This building sits...it doesn't have a backyard. It's gonna set, it's gonna be like on an island, it's gonna have traffic moving all the way around and all four sides, basically, so we didn't wanna have one side that didn't look as nice as the rest of them, and like just dress up the front. So, the whole building will be brick all the way around, and I wanted to kinda emphasize that. In talking with John Wallace, he raised some issues, okay? He raised some issues about the fact that this site is limited to how many individual spaces it can have, less than 2,250 square feet, okay? There's a percentage of the whole development can be that. This building we're proposing will have one of those, less than 2,250, the other three will be bigger. Right now, we've got this designed as four tenants, and it'll come down a little bit to who they end up getting in as tenants. And when I'm done with my talking, I'm gonna turn it back over to Jim, and Jim can talk a little bit more from the owner's standpoint about who they're...who they've been talking to as far as tenants. But a couple of the issues that John Wallace raised was the fact that he was concerned a little bit, we didn't maybe have enough stacking on the drive-up lanes. And you'll see that each one of these has just a little bit more stacking, and if there's no loading zone, if there's no truck in the loading zone behind the building, that would serve as stacking space, basically, if there's nobody loading, and it can go back and stack behind the entire building. Wouldn't be any problems, as long as there's not a truck in there. Truck comes, the truck will come and move in and take that space. Typically, these types of restaurants, like Jimmy John's and that sort of thing, if you've ever seen them, they have drive-up restaurants, and a lot of Jimmy John's and Subways, they're more common now to have freestanding buildings for those restaurants, but they still don't have very many cars at any given time. Maybe three, four stacking up. They're not like a McDonald's that'll have, you know, 20, 25 cars at lunchtime. These don't have that. And even the ones that we've done before, like Bigby's, or even Tim Hortons, they don't have a lot of cars, even at their busiest times. So, we don't think that that's gonna be any of a problem, but we did correct it. Now, also two on this, the 15 spaces that are at the north, they have easy access. They cross well in front of...or they can cross well in front of the drive-up traffic. We will locate the employees' parking, basically, down in that southeast corner, as close like to where we have the dumpsters right now, as possible, because they'll park down there, they're not gonna be going back and forth across the parking, the drive-up traffic or anything. Maybe half of those 25 spaces down there, probably at least half of them will be employees for the building. And because now we have 50 parking spaces under this design out in front, typically for almost, probably at least 95% of the time, those 50 spaces out in front will satisfy most of the occupant load for the building. That's what we're anticipating. But that's basically it, that's what we did, we reshuffled around, we added 43 feet to the south to basically allow us to pick up those 18 extra parking spaces. We now feel that 90 is an adequate amount for this building. Even if you go back to the 20 for each on the restaurant, 20 parking spaces each there, now that gives 50 for the rest of the building, which again is over half of the building. So, it's proportion, it's in good proportion now. We also had comments back that we hadn't had any site utilities, and that's on the third page of the handout that I gave you. And again, too, that's from Excel Engineering, and that's the original plan, and it was also raised, I think, about the fact that they didn't show a fire line coming into the building, but there are two fire hydrants right on our property in opposite corners. There's one up at the northeast corner and one at the southwest corner, and the water to fire sprinkle of this building, which it will be fire-protected, is gonna come from one of those two locations. But we'll need, again, to modify the site, because obviously, I don't have the grading on here. The grading will be very, very similar to what we did before, as far as where the storm basins are and everything else. Uh, let's see. I think that's about it. And I've already responded to Anthony Wolf as far as his fire review, I've paid the fire review fee, and I've given him comments back to my response to his comments, which basically, there wasn't anything that was gonna be any problem at all with the fire department on the project. And I guess if anybody has any questions, what we were hoping to do is to get approval tonight, and again, too, what we're trying to do is to show you that we did respond to a bunch of the items that John brought up, and if he wants to make comments, too, well, welcome to if I missed anything that he had brought up to me. But he also brought up the issue of what kind of tenants were we looking at, and I'm not really the one to answer that, that's more Jim and John to answer those questions. But do you have any questions for me?
On our packet that we did receive, there was, right, you touched base on utilities and drainage. We had something here on lighting that the city slash staff wanted, and then something about the drawing for the Boulevard, for Terry Lee Boulevard, Terry D, sorry, that staff had issues on, I haven't heard comments about that. You did address the utilities, yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, I think with the utilities, what we'll have to do is condition your recommendation of approval to the council, subject to sign-off letters from the utility department heads, since I don't have anything back from them, having said that they reviewed it or that's okay, so I think that's the only way we can keep moving forward. And I asked in an email to Joe that all that information be submitted and approved by the department heads prior to it going to city council.
Have you been okay with lighting, because that was on your...
Well, that's...no, that's one of the things that they need to respond to.
Okay. You're aware of all this, then, Joe?
Right.
What's that, Bob?
Well, yeah, well, let's wait till we get to the end and see where it goes in terms of the conditions.
Okay. We did figure that there would be a number of conditions that you'd put on any approval to us, because when you get down to it, one of the other things that I forgot to mention that John had brought up before was, there was concern about, you know, meeting the proper turn radiuses for the entrance and exit drives and things like that, and that's...we fully plan to do that, too. And again, too, it's part of a typical engineering review that basically, we don't go anywhere on a building permit until we get all that stuff taken care of, too. And same thing like with the basic lighting and that sort of thing, foot candles on the site and that sort of thing.
Any questions, then, for Joe before, okay, before Jim comes back up? Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
One of the main reasons why we're kinda moving as fast as we can is we wanna build this building yet this year. We wanna start construction and be moving so we can have occupancy for next spring, you know? Right now, we don't have any leases signed, but we've had lots of interest, and we're... we're, we're not able to even price the leases until we get approval from you and the city council, and we put it out for, for pricing on the building, construction pricing, and then we could, then we can bid, bid the leases and stuff like that. So, and we're quite excited and quite anticipate having occupancy, if not full, very close to being full next spring, so.
All right. I just don't want to get the cart before the horse, so, or even for council, because this is just recommendation to council, I understand, so just trying to make-
In terms of lot adjustment, what does that do to the site to the south?
Well, we got all kinds of room there to the south.
I mean, you're proposing a bank. Is that still a doable bank site, or?
Yes, it is, and we would use that shared parking that we, we put to the south there. We would make that shared for employee parking also for the bank itself, so we'd have plenty of space at the bank site.
Okay, so this, this adjustment, you don't think knocks out the next development?
No, not whatsoever. In fact, we just slide it right back, so we're, we're in excellent shape there.
With this new drawing, you're showing landscaping actually off the parcel on the rear of the building. How does that work in terms of who takes care of that? Who's landscaping is that?
That landscaping would be the homeowner, the building owner's responsibility.
Okay, so you would-
And that building, and we're maintaining ownership of that within the family or the Vanderlon family. It won't be Terry D., but it'll be within that family.
Okay, so, so a condition of this approval would be that all that landscaping that's outside the parcel would be maintained by this parcel?
Yep, no problem at all.
Okay. I, I haven't obviously gone over this in detail, having seen it just tonight, but in general, I, I do not have any issues with it. The only, I do agree, I totally agree with them, that I think the positioning of the parking is better from a marketing perspective, that I think people feel more comfortable with more of the parking being in front of the building as opposed to the back of the building, especially since there'll be street lighting out on the Terry D. Boulevard. I, with respect to the parking design, I've been looking into a lot of this in anticipation of rewriting the ordinance, and a lot of their parking is nine-by-eighteens, which in most cases is appropriate. It's what's kind of like what they even use for Meyer Standard. In seeing what we've done elsewhere and, and talking to a number of people, I think nine-by-eighteens where you have potential for overhang, footer, or foot or so of overhang, like against, you know, the open space areas of the front plaza, I think those are all suitable designs for parking stalls. In my, in the previous plan, I was recommending that they change just the bay that was out at Terry D. Boulevard to nine-and-a-half, nine-and-a-half-wit spaces. For instance, in our own downtown plaza, we went with ten-foot spaces, and of course, the reason we do this is there's a lot of trucks, a lot of larger vehicles that are, are being used, and that being the case, obviously not everybody has large vehicles, but the thought being that if you had some option for some larger vehicles, and that's not even real large, that's, that's only nine-and-a-half.
No, we're talking about just along in-
Just, just the bay, just the bay out against Terry D. Boulevard, that that would, and then the other one is since we don't have overhang, and you have the twenty-four-foot aisles, two-way in front, that, that we just gain one more foot to get to nineteen in that center bay. I think you have eighteen in the center bay, because that didn't overhang any other open space area. That way, we get to a theoretical nineteen-foot length on everything. You've got the benefit of the nine. And the reason why you don't want to get too narrow, too, is because in theory, you have the numbers on paper, but if people don't, if people don't hit that spot dead center, you're vacating about every third spot to poor parking, whereas if you give a little bit more space, then you're not losing those spaces. So, you know, it's one thing to count them on paper, it's another to count them when they're in the field and they're actually parking in them, so.
We would have no problem with that, because we've, we've also, by expanding the site, we've gone from seventy-two spots to ninety now. We'll, we'll probably cut down two or three spots, so we'll still have more than, than what was originally given to the planning board.
Now, we, now we have the ability, because this is an MPUD, if, if you don't feel you need to be as high as that, we can go lower, but it's my understanding you think you need that parking. Is that my understanding?
I believe so, to make it, to continue the quality of the development that we want to do.
Okay, I just didn't want you to think you were providing it for us if we didn't see any real need to go dramatically higher.
We want a, we want a nice, nice building.
You, you think it's needed for, for the capacity of the uses that you're trying to attract?
We do, and we, we just want, I, I drive a big four-wheel-drive truck, you know, pulling into some of these parking spots. I'm shameful of being on the line or awful close, so, no, I think that's great suggestions, and we would, we would have no problem doing that, because it does make our building a nicer building. We, we want people to be convenient to come.
The other thing that I talked to Joe about was, I know when we, we looked at the drive-thru, you know, when we started studying the drive-throughs for like more intensive restaurants, say like a high-volume McDonald's, I just wanted to, I, I don't think this queuing would meet that kind of situation, but it's been my understanding that you're going to be trying to attract a restaurant that has a less intense draw through their drive-throughs than say a, you know, a popular McDonald's.
Oh, yeah.
Because that, that probably would, that probably would not work in the, in the site plan.
No, that's not who we're looking at.
Okay, I just wanted to get that on the table, so that-
And a McDonald's would not come to that, because they knew it wouldn't be, wouldn't be able to support them, so.
But I think the lesser intense type of restaurant that has a much more modest drive-through, I think the, I think you got, what, about five or six queuing? I think that would work, work just fine.
Jim, you're aware of some of the other things that staff had put on there as far, you know, like, well, we already talked about trees and stuff, there was something here on a, on a bike, bicycle rack they'd like to see, I don't know, it's on my deal.
Did you have a chance to read through my report?
I didn't, I didn't read.
I can just read through the form one and see how it applies to the new one.
I think we're pretty agreeable. Go ahead.
First of all, I asked that the final missing site plan information be supplied, and I think you're more than likely maybe have already done that, but now we just have to go back to the department heads, get them to review and sign off. And I think we also have to have it being conditioned upon the Terry D. Boulevard, actually, just like for the other project, being built and approved, you know, I mean, you're going to have to have the paving go through, through the driveways and a turn, and a, even a temporary turnaround-
Pelosack there.
For the fire department's approval, okay? All right. The proposed site lighting, I could see perhaps on the back or maybe even sides, maybe doing wall packs or something, but you'd probably want to do something nicer in the front of the building, wouldn't you? So, when you give us the road construction plans, well, you'll have to be showing the lighting that lights the street, and then how you intend to light the front of this building. Are you going to put something in the front landscape area and shoot it back towards the building, or are you going to have it on the building and, or light some of it from the building and some of it from the landscape area? You'll have to decide how you want to light up that front parking area.
That's a three-nice curve island, two in the front yard there now, and one in the south side yard there.
We'll just, we'll just need to see, see the lighting fixture locations, what they'll look like, and you'll recall from prior meetings that everybody's concerned that they have the dark sky fixtures, the cutoffs that you don't have open globe lighting.
That's Bruce standard, yep.
Yeah, okay. And I think Bruce was also looking for more drainage information, and I think the condition could just be that all that information be submitted and approved by the department heads, and ideally, that would happen prior to going to council, and that would be a nice clean approval with everything in place, once it cleared the city council. All right, we talked about the front bay parking, and then, let's see, I think it would be beneficial to have at least one private sidewalk connection from the public sidewalk to the, to the private sidewalk. If you want to do more than one, I guess that would be up to you, but I think it makes sense to have at least one designated place to connect the public system to the private And I think probably the addition of at least one bike rack, in that there's going to be, well, actually residential, even within the development eventually, as well as nearby, I think that makes sense. Originally, I talked about two deciduous trees being added to the north landscape strip. You've narrowed that down quite a bit. I don't know if that makes sense any longer. Do you know what that width of that little buffer strip is on the north side?
About twelve fifty-six feet.
Okay. Would you have any opposition to a couple trees at that location, or?
A couple, yeah.
No? Okay.
I'll put some smaller ones in there.
Okay. All right. I think that would be good. And then, I know it's probably assumed, but the surfaces ought to be identified. I'm assuming the parking would be asphalt, and then where you're going to have concrete curving, and then I assume you're going to have a concrete slab on the dumpster enclosure? Okay. Just, just the final one that you submit to us, that you include the pavement types, just so that we have that down?
Yep.
Okay. And then just the, whatever type of construction you're planning for the enclosure itself, whether it's going to be six-foot-high wood privacy, how, how you intend to construct that dumpster enclosure?
It'll be, it'll be brick or just like the building.
I guess with respect to planning commission action, the planning commission would recommend to the city council that the final site plan for this multi-use building either be approved, approved with conditions, or denied. Seems like we're heading towards an approval with conditions. Any conditions in the motion of approval or reasons, well, if there wasn't denial, which we're not going there, everything has to be included in the motion, so the recommendation to approve to city council and then statement of all the conditions would have to be in the motion. And then, if you want all those, all the, you know, the conditions for the submittals to be here in time for the council meeting, you could put that in the motion so that they hurry up between now and the city council meeting and try to secure the department head approval while we get those final plans into the city council.
And that's no problem either. We, we need to have all those things done.
How far away are we from the next council meeting?
The third Monday in November.
Okay.
So we've got a little bit of time.
Okay, so there's a little, little breathing space there. Twenty-first, but don't wait, don't wait up to the last day to get the approval.
Bring them in that night. Now, we appreciate all the comments, you know, we haven't, that's great, great additions, and we want to make it nice. A lot of stuff has to be added to this motion on the backside.
That's the high part.
Yep. It's all there though. It is.
I think you could almost, I think you could almost use the conditions that are in the staff report. Let's see if there's any that we added that aren't in there. I make a motion to approve the information, the plan that's put before us with all these conditions, through us with the staff report.
Upon, upon department head approval, too, which is a non-our-staff report, so.
Is that covered, John, with adding the department head approval? Yeah, I think, I think, I think you could clarify that all the, let's see, it's fine the way it is, because it says submitted prior and approved prior to final site plan to the council, so, so they would have to gain their approvals before it went to council. So I think as written is probably, the only, the only one that I think that we talked about, or two, two that we didn't have in the, in the, in the staff report, it was adding one extra foot to the middle parking bay in the front to get those to be nineteen, and then a clarification that the landscaping shown just to the east of the parcel line would be the responsibility of this site owner. Landscaping is maintained by this parcel owner or the building owner. And so, everything that I had in my staff report is the recommendations, plus those two would make up the motion of recommendation for approval to the council.
That's what I said. Good job, Kevin.
No, not at all. And I'll support.
Okay.
Smith?
Oh.
Champlin?
Yes.
Schichtel?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dent?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Well, it's got to have a room in your house.
Your mayor has one, right? That has plenty of room somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just taking, we'll give you a second. If you don't want to hang out, still have fun, so that's okay.
Can't have too much fun in one night.
I know, I know. Got to limit it.
I was always going to volunteer to take this evening, he was going to presentation.
Oh, cool.
Thought you'd need somebody that would grill them, you know, but.
There.
Wow.
Yeah, we got to live with them, so we got to be careful. Okay, under new business still, we now are going to discuss a setting of a public hearing on zoning amendments to address regulations for a crematorium land use. Having read that, it looks like Mr. Wallace is back in the seat to guide us in this discussion.
I sent with you- I sent with you two proposed drafts, and I also wrote briefly about it in a memo to you, to cover two land uses that we've been, been brought forward to us, as two things that applicants in the community would like to apply for that aren't mentioned in the zoning ordinance, one being a crematorium, the other being homeless shelter. I have submitted proposed drafts to you, I've submitted them to the attorney for review. The hope would be that we could, between discussion tonight, and any additions that the attorney may recommend, that we would go to a public hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, to govern the two uses that we haven't regulated in the zoning ordinance, one being the crematorium, the other being the homeless shelter. Two totally different strategies were used for the crematorium. I wrote specific language of what districts it would be permitted in, both as a primary use and as an accessory use. For the homeless shelter, what I did was create something you're probably not used to, which is an overlay district. It's not uncommon for, in zoning ordinances, to have overlay districts for a number of topics. Sometimes corridor aesthetics is one, or something that applies in every district within that overlay district. And so, I wanted to write some provisions on the homeless shelter, where they could be considered in numerous districts, but under certain site conditions. So, two totally different strategies. And I guess with that, we could probably take the, go over the recommended draft standards for each one. We probably could start with the crematorium use. Just a request, please, please don't make this printing any smaller than you already did. My God. With, with, with respect to the crematorium, I tried to work off of existing zoning requirements. And since we don't mention it in the zoning ordinance, of course, we didn't have definitions. So, I'm recommending that we add definitions to accommodate the use of a crematorium and a pet crematorium. And also, alter the definition of a funeral home, so that a crematorium could be considered as an accessory use under certain conditions. And so, and then, that the zoning district amendments, that, that crematoriums would be added as a special land use in the I-1 and I-2 zoning districts, the same with pet crematoriums, and add crematoriums as an accessory use to a funeral home, but only in the B-3 zoning district. And I will get to some of the rationale behind that. Maybe I'll just get into the specific standards, and some of those questions will be answered. Okay, specific standards for crematoriums, human and pet. A crematorium may be granted as a special use permit if, in addition to meeting the special use general standards, it also meets the following special standards. Crematoriums should be established either for human or pet purposes, but not both. Crematoriums being proposed as a primary use may accept bodies from multiple funeral home clients. Again, that would relate to the sheer magnitude of cremations occurring at the facility, if you were accepting it from multiple clients. Crematoriums being proposed an accessory use may only cremate bodies for clients who are using their own funeral services. So, that's a big distinction between accessory use and primary use. All crematoriums, whether as a primary or accessory use, shall be a minimum of three hundred feet from any residential use, school, or daycare center. Distance to be measured from the nearest portion of the crematorium building to the nearest portion of the residential school or daycare parcel, because I'm sure that will become an issue as well. And within the three hundred feet, I guess you could talk about this at great length, but I guess I'll, I'll give a synopsis of it. I've probably reviewed, oh, how crematoriums are handled in probably anywhere from fifty to a hundred different communities. Also looking at how states handle it, how cities handle it. And we talked about this in our subcommittee meeting. I guess Connecticut has gone the farthest in trying to really pin, pin these things down, and they did a study of about seventeen communities. Out of those seventeen, half of, half of them didn't permit crematoriums at all. And then, the state, by their mandate, would not allow a crematorium within five hundred feet of a residential use. And then, there were a variety of spatial separations, going from three hundred all the way to a thousand feet of separation. And it wasn't unique to Connecticut. If you look at other states, the spatial separation was routinely anywhere from about three hundred to a thousand feet of separation. So, and what we are proposing, I guess we're on the low end of that. And then, you might say, well, why the separation? Well, there's a number of reasons for that. Part of it, and I know there's a lot of information that's saying, you know, the scrubbers and the equipment makes cremation safe in terms of air quality. You know, and I guess that's a, a concept that you don't, there is no ultimate safe. It's just relative, adding more pollution to the air, and what does that addition of that pollution mean from a safety perspective? And, and I guess there is no ultimate answer to that. If you have cremations, the biggest concern is adding mercury to the air. It was very common in dental work for years, for cavities to be filled with mercury fillings. And so, that's one thing. The body also accumulates other chemical compounds, which are also released in the cremation. Now, if you had one, would people start taking ill immediately? Probably not. It's just another addition of another layer of contaminants in the air that get added to the existing contaminants in the air, which has a, just a collective thing. Now, the other reason why you might have separation, you could easily point to land use compatibility, especially as it relates to residential land values, both in terms of its function versus the function of residential. And you could also look to property values in particular. So, you could be looking at human health and safety, you could be looking at land use compatibility, you could be looking at impact of housing values. I would imagine, if you had a residential structure, immediately a budding crematorium that, day one that it opened, it probably would devalue that residential property. I'm not sure by how much, but I'm guessing that it probably would be, you know, significant, you know, on the order of maybe twenty percent. So, there's all these things that are out there, and I guess what I did find too, that there was no, no ultimate right answer. In fact, we're running a little behind. Normally, when a use has been around for a long time, collectively, the zoning world agrees on a right way, or appropriate way to deal with something. And to tell you the truth, I was really not finding that philosophy advanced as, as much as I hoped it would. But that being the case, there was the common theme of spatial separation. So, you had a number of people saying, you can't do it at all, many people saying you can do it in industrial districts, many people saying you could do it in business districts, but you had to maintain the spatial separation. So, you started to see a consistency or a pattern, even though it didn't go as far as I had hoped. So, really, what we're being asked to do is, is kind of still be, not on the very cutting edge, but sort of on the, still on the leading edge of trying to adopt something that makes sense and has some degree of protection. And in that case, I think we're going erring on the side of the lower spatial requirement. It wouldn't be, in my estimation, inappropriate if you wanted to change that spatial separation. We could bring in more and more documentation. At some point, though, it just becomes confusing, because you're just tallying up columns and saying, who does what? And I don't know that it would change much, the more information that we compiled. But that is what we were finding. All activity relating to the dead shall be handled discreetly and be screened from public view to the maximum extent possible, including delivery and storage of the remains. The crematoriums should not be used for the disposal of any waste materials. The crematoriums shall not emit any visible air emissions, nor generate odors which are discernible beyond their lot lines. The applicant or applicant representative for a crematorium shall make a presentation to the Planning Commission on the proposed cremation equipment, including emission control devices and chimney stack height. Such presentations shall include plans for ongoing emission monitoring and performance testing and documentation that all emissions fall within accepted industry practices and meet all applicable state or federal air quality standards. Crematoriums shall be constructed, installed, operated, and maintained in accordance with all manufacturer specifications and all applicable federal, state, and local permits as amended. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any crematorium, the operator shall provide documentation to the city that all applicable federal, state, and local permits have been obtained. A primary use crematorium may provide a room or rooms for private viewing of the cremation by a member of the deceased family, but may not be used to conduct public or private funeral home services. The applicant shall identify for the city any certifications that will be required to operate the crematorium, both from a facility standpoint and an operator's standpoint. Any additional standards or operation requirements that are needed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, or to address unique characteristics of a particular site, as defined by the city planning commission, shall be complied with by the landowner and/or developer and crematory operator and owner. Some of this, I was able to pull out of other regulations that I was able to find, some as uniquely crafted by myself, to, I think, do maximum job of trying to cover that all precautions that we can take to ensure as much air quality, safety as we can, we can get, that we're able to do that. I know it's hard, I tried to pull myself apart from the application that, you know, we had been aware of, thinking that this is being written for anybody from today going forward, what is the proper, proper way to deal with this type of use? And that's kind of the perspective that I tried to write it from. Unfortunately, what you see with City of Cadillac is, we have extremely narrow commercial zones. And so, while other cities maybe can look like they're more liberal and saying, well, we allow it in all these commercial districts, well, if those commercial districts are large, you can achieve the separation that you need to achieve within those large districts. We tend to have our residential developments very tight to our commercial districts. And so, we can never get very far away, we can never, anything built in our commercial district is going to be very close to a residential structure, or multiple residential structures. The other problem we have is that, for better or worse, we allow a lot of consideration for residential development within our business districts, either as accessory, or, and I'd have to go through and read you the various provisions, but there, there is provisions to consistently consider residential development within our, within our business districts, the OS-2, you know, B-1, all those different districts. So, knowing that you could have some now, you could have more residential later, it's not only the proximity of a crematorium to districts outside the district, or within that three hundred feet, it's the fact that you're continuing potentially to allow people within the district, and that, that's also an issue as well. So, to, to my best ability, what I tried to do is write something that allowed maximum potential, to do as much of it as you possibly could. But I didn't want to throw all precaution out the window, and, and not maintain the one constant that I saw in most of the other ordinances that I reviewed, not only nationally, but internationally as well. I also looked at case examples in Canada and England as well. So, it's something that carried across borders, and that's, that's where it comes down. Now, can someone make an argument that you should throw out spatial standards? I imagine someone could attempt to take that position. It's just not one I felt comfortable, in light of the information I was able to collect to, to do so. So, in, in fact, what would happen if you adopted this, you would be writing the potential for a funeral home, either as a primary use or an accessory use to happen in either of our industrial districts, subject to the spatial separation. I think the only other district that you could achieve it, I think you could achieve it in the B-3. I think the B-3 on the west side of Mitchell might be the only other district where you could get to a three hundred foot distance to, from residential development. So, it would be industrial districts and one, and probably one B-3 district, commercial district, and that would only allow the funeral home with accessory crematorium. Are there places in the industrial that were three hundred feet away from residential? Does that exist?
In the industrial, yes.
The Potvin, one?
Yeah, there definitely in our industrial areas.
Right.
There is room for a three hundred foot spatial from residential.
From residential, right. And that's what we're...
One of those I-1s though, just to the north of Thirteenth Street, are close to residential.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't lock out every, I mean, I get...
I mean, that would be a place, that's industrial and the three hundred.
Right. And I mean, if, if you're not comfortable with three hundred, then it's perfectly legitimate to talk about another dimension, and we could go back and analyze that. As I said, I think I went to the smallest consistent number that I observed. Most times that I saw spatial separation, it was usually greater than three hundred. It was either three hundred, five hundred, many times it was nine hundred or a thousand. Those were the most common numbers that I saw.
I have a question about that accessory one. So, if you just do the industrial things like you suggested in here, somebody would have to put a new funeral home out in the industrial park to have an accessory, right?
Or in the B-3 district on Mitchell Street.
If you included that in there.
Right. Right, so there would only be two sites you could do a funeral home, if you wanted to have a crematory, crematorium as an accessory structure. Now, obviously, as you get outside the city, the whole landscape changes. The commercial districts get much larger, the spacer, spatial separation gets much easier to meet, because they have a different land use pattern than we do.
But if we stuck to the I-1 and the I-2, then they'd have to be out there to do both of them.
Right. They would have to, for, to run as a funeral home and an accessory crematorium, they would have to be in either the B-3 or the industrial districts. And the only B-3 they could be in would probably be on the west side of Mitchell.
Oh, they don't, do they have to be...
Because some of the B-3s on the right, on the east side of Mitchell, run back into the same dimensional, dimensional problem, where they're very close to residential development. the same dimensional problem where they're very close to residential development. You can kind of, you can kind of observe on your zoning map how close. So, unfortunately, you can't, I mean, there's no way that you can turn this into a black and white science. There's no way you can say, "This is the perfect, appropriate way to deal with this issue." I think I've tried to propose something that is probably as liberal on the subject as I felt good about, still thinking about the general health, safety, and welfare of the public, all things considered. You know, I think to myself, if I owned a home that abutted a crematorium, how would I feel, you know? And quite frankly, I'd probably put my home up for sale, if that happened to me.
There'd be a lot of people that'd be like that, so...
So, this is a beginning point. If it looks good to you, we don't have to change it. If there's parts that are, you're pondering and say, "Well, maybe we should look at something else, or consider something else," I think that's perfectly appropriate. I think the main thing is, is to see maybe, in the interest of not delaying people and actions that they're trying to make plans for, that we delay it. So, it'd be nice to, if we can, to move forward with a public hearing at our next planning commission meeting. If, tonight, you said, "Let's work on some changes," I'd be happy to work on those changes as quickly as possible so we could still bring them back at next month's meeting as a public hearing. We would just have to commit to that so that we made the timing work, unless you wanted to greatly extend the amount of information to collect, and then we might not be able to. But, that's up to this commission.
So, the public hearing would be, what, mainly to get, send this...
It would...
Input from citizens?
They would, we would file a notice in the paper that we intended to make text amendments to the zoning ordinance on this use, and, correct me if I'm wrong, and it wouldn't have to go to people within 300 feet, because it's a general amendment. We just put it in the paper, and people could come in and comment on the text amendment.
And if there's people that are living in close to funeral homes right now, they would be welcome to come.
Oh, yeah.
I think a public hearing would educate people, say, "This is a very complex consideration, and there's no easy answer, and it's going to affect me and everyone else on planet Earth."
I was, given a little more time, I was going to come in with some more documentation, it's just that so many things are happening right now, I just didn't have time to assemble a more collective document, but I could certainly do that by the public hearing.
Yeah, I think this is good information to go by, and I guess, you know, I'd like to thank Joe and David and Mr. Wallace, all the work that they do have on this for us, so...
There's one thing that I wondered, John and David, I got together, is 500 feet away from a crematorium safer than 50 feet away? It depends on the heights of the ignition...
Well, yeah, that, yeah, it's a...
50 is gonna go over.
Well, they actually have taken soil samples, and they've studied the amount of chemical accumulation in the soil at different distances, and it does dissipate over distance. Whether they've put it into a formula and say, "It's this much less at 50 feet versus 100 feet," I don't know if it's that precise, but they have conducted studies that do show, and it also is different with the prevailing wind pattern.
New stack height, there's a lot of...
Right. And the stack height, I imagine, I guess in reality, yeah, the stack height could make a big change too, because...
The DNR is gonna be, have a big say in this too.
DEQ.
DEQ, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the DEQ would require a permit, but I wasn't able to ascertain from them whether they had any definitive standard. I know that the EPA does not have any standards for crematoriums. They at one time attempted to regulate them as a solid waste facility, and I guess there was a lot of opposition to that, so they removed all consideration of a crematorium as a solid waste facility, and then chose to never reestablish any regulations for a crematorium use in terms of air quality. I don't know if they just saw it as way, way too political, or, but they opted not to go down that path.
Seems like if you made it like 500 feet, you'd eliminate anybody kind of on that west side of the main street, you were talking about, that had B-3. And there are people, you know, that, you're gonna see a tower stacked in your backyard, maybe, or something, either...
That's the only thing in this that I would, I would ask that we think about, because you said there was anywhere from 300 to 1,000.
Right.
I would feel more comfortable going 500.
Well, that was the Connecticut state standard. I mean, I could bring, I could come back with more stand, more accumulation of standards, but if that gave you a better comfort level of where people were more coming down, I think, I think there were more cases of it being over 300 than at 300.
Right, I heard you say that, so...
As you start to increase that, though, your potential...
Yeah, now you're narrowing where they can go.
Yeah, narrowing, because you're looking at a, you know, 500 foot circumference, you know, 1,000 foot area.
Yep.
Sure.
Which, is it our goal to outlaw them from the city?
No, 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 no.
Keep them away from residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 300 keeps them away from residential. I think it's a good compromise.
300 does, or the 500?
It does keep them away.
300 does, yeah.
I think the 500 is more comfortable.
300 is a football field, and you can drive a golf ball at 500. But, we...
I know, some people...
Wow, that would be amazing.
As you move to the industrial area, you also reduce the area there if you go to 500. It's just out in your order, that... In what's your real, is it public health concern from that stack, or is it primarily an aesthetic thing for all values?
What I can do is, I can, I can take some, do some maps showing what that dimension looks like, or what...
500, that'd be kinda nice.
To show you what land could be considered at both dimensions.
That would be interesting.
And then I could get that to you ahead of the public hearing, so that, if that's the only thing that we're trying to decide on, we could look at my new information, and we could also look at whatever public comment comes back from the public, and then, if that's all that we have to do, it becomes easy to pick a number. It's just that we gotta feel comfortable with the number we release for the public hearing.
Yes.
And we wanna change it before we go out to notice.
Yeah, but you know, if you don't have some information to come in, and people come in here to discuss it, they're gonna wanna know what other cities do, and they're gonna wanna know what dangers there are of this, and what's the DEQ stand on it. They're gonna wanna know, I know I will.
Right.
You could end up in my neighborhood, right?
Right, and I was not able to get the DEQ to wanna talk about laying out standards. Their only comment was, "It will require a permit," and that's...
But that, the permission...
But I don't know.
...to make a list of things that...
I'll try harder to see if they're willing to lay out what they'll be considering as a condition for that permit. I wasn't able to get it in my first attempt, so, just told that it would require a permit.
That map idea is...
All right. Well, do you...